Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 14th, 2020 Clovis City Council Meeting. And welcome. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and social distancing guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in council meetings. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies, and we will limit the number of people who may be in the council chambers. The meeting will be webcast and access at the link shown on the screen. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in meetings by accessing the webcast at the link noted, providing written comments at the same website, participating by phone, or coming to the council, city council meeting in person, where we would be practicing social distancing with a maximum of 16 people inside the council chambers. I will call this meeting to order and ask Councilmember Flores to lead us in the flag salute.
Please join me in putting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jose. And if the clerk will call, roll please.
Councilmember Ashbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Councilmember Moana Tua.
Here.
Councilmember Whelan.
Here.
Mayor Besseger.
Here. Now we come to the presentations and proclamations portion of the meeting. We have a proclamation declaring September 6th as Jaswant Singh Khala Day, and I've asked Councilmember Moana Tua to do the proclamation. Do we have anybody representing the Sikh community here tonight? Sir, if you could come up and introduce yourself, and we're going to do this proclamation.
Good evening, council, mayor, and to our fellow residents here in the city of Clovis. On behalf of the Sikh community in Clovis, we just wanted to express our gratitude for recognizing the Jaswant Singh Khala Day here in the city of Clovis. Jaswant Singh Khala is beyond just a particular Sikh human rights figure. It's really somebody that I believe encapsulates the values of the city and for all communities and beyond. He was a person that even in the face of danger did what was right. He has a remarkable history. I hope people take the time to Google or Wikipedia, but it's really truly an honor to have the city of Clovis recognize this, appreciate my friends on council, of course, our residents of Clovis, and really the city of Clovis at large. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We value our Sikh community, and it's our pleasure to do this proclamation.
Thank you, Central Unified School Board Member, Maynade Chan, for being here. Recognizing Jaswant Singh Khala Day. Whereas Jaswant Singh Khala was a strong advocate for the democratic and human rights of all people, and whereas Jaswant Singh Khala was a highly respected leader within the Sikh community and beyond, and whereas Jaswant Singh Khala documented human rights abuse and fought for the dignity of all that had their humanity trampled by the Indian government, and whereas the city of Clovis is proud of its Sikh community as home to a broad service of organizations such as the Gudwara Sahib of Clovis and the Jakara movement that are committed to social justice for all. And whereas September 6th is recognized by Sikhs and human rights supporters across the world as the date of the kidnapping and murder of Jaswant Singh Khala in 1995, now therefore be resolved, the city of Clovis, on behalf of the citizens of Clovis, declares September 6th, 2020, as Jaswant Singh Khala Day. And it is witnessed and signed with the official seal of the city by our mayor, Drew Besseger. If you can come up, we can present you with it.
Taking pictures has become so awkward. They get, they gotta jump back. Wow. That's right. That would come to the public comments portion of our meeting. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on any matter within the city council's jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to five minutes or less, or 10 minutes per topic. Anyone wishing to be placed on the agenda for a specific topic should contact the city manager's office and submit correspondence at least 10 days before the desired date of appearance. Do we have anyone inside council chambers who wishes to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will close comments of the council. Do we have anybody on the web?
None.
Mr. Clerk, did we have any comments sent in?
No.
Okay. I will close public comments. In regards to ordinances and resolutions, with respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution or ordinance, and unless there is a request by a council member, that the resolution or ordinance be read in full. Further reading of the resolution ordinance shall be deemed waived by the unanimous consent of the council. Now we come to the consent calendar. These are items considered routine in nature are placed upon the consent calendar. They will all be considered and voted upon in one vote as one item unless a council member requests individual consideration. A council member's vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action listed. Motions in favor of adoption of the consent calendar are deemed to include a motion to waive the reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For adoption of ordinances, only those that have received a unanimous vote upon introduction are considered consent items. Does any member of the council wish to have an item pulled from the consent calendar? Seeing none, Lynn, are you, okay. Any member of the public in chambers wish to have an item on the consent calendar pulled? Seeing none, we have anybody on the web?
No.
And Mr. Clerk, we got no correspondence?
Would you not?
Okay. I will consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item seven, consider for the city council to provide policy direction regarding a request by Wilson Premier Homes for council to authorize staff to begin the process to amend the city of Clovis sphere of influence to allow future urbanization of approximately 825 acres north of Shepherd Avenue, generally between Sunnyside Avenue and North Carson, Big Dry Creek Dam. Staff presenter is Ricky Caperton. Ricky?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. So just to kind of provide a little context of what the request is tonight, this is, what we're seeking is direction regarding an amendment to the city's sphere of influence encompassing approximately 825 acres north of Shepherd. This is really in addition to or supplants the March 2nd, 2020 request, which, if you may recall, was on the corner parcel for about 75 acres on the northeast corner of Shepherd and Sunnyside. So for a little background since March, council directed staff at that time to proceed with preparation of environmental studies and other studies related to that 75 acre portion of land on the northeast corner of Sunnyside and Shepherd. In April 22, as a result of, or April 2020, as a result of COVID, the applicant had requested that we put the project on hold following that decision. Fast forward to July, the applicant requested that we pick up and continue, and at that time, the city staff put out a request for a proposal for a consultant to prepare the environmental impact report. Last month, the applicant, as part of that, requested to amend the acreage, the amount of acreage they were seeking to include in the sphere. So as you can see here on this map, the red area that you see there at the top of the screen is the 825 acres approximately. For context, I wanted to include what the existing sphere of influence is, which is everything in shaded and green. If you can see it on there, the light blue line denotes the existing city limit. And then also, for context, wanted to show the different, the three urban centers that we have. We have Heritage Grove, the northeast urban center, which encompasses about 400 to 450 acres of the sphere request, as you can see there, as well as Loma Vista, which you're familiar with. So kind of bringing it down at a little bit of a micro level. So just to jog your memory, back in March, the yellow hash line that you see there was what was requested. That's approximately 75 acres on that corner, and you can see how this sphere request has evolved into the red shaded area, which is the 825 acres. So some of the previous sphere amendments that we've had include in 2000, the Heritage Grove acreage up there, which is approximately 1,600 acres, as well as Loma Vista, which was for 3,300 acres. A little bit more recently, 2014, 2015, we brought in another 900 acres to kind of square off the Heritage Grove area there at Sunnyside. And then just as most recent as last year, there was the northeast sphere expansion, which was about 1,000 acres, a little more. So you might be wondering why the request for the 825. And this image here is really kind of intended to tie it together, and why it might make sense to move forward with the request. If you look at the right of the screen in the green shaded area, that particular acreage there, which is about 400, 450 acres, was included as focus area 13, or the northeast urban center. So those 405 acres, we've actually, in a sense, planned for. That already has general plan land designations. That was back in 2014 when we did our general plan update. On the other green hashed area, which I just mentioned, that was the 75 acres. So in a sense, if you think about it, we've already said the 405 acres as part of focus area 13 that we planned, and then based on direction that council provided back in March, we said, okay, go ahead and move forward with these additional 75 acres, which is where the pecan orchard is. So really, what you have here as part of this 405 is two areas that we've already said move forward with. So the middle orange highlighted area is really kind of that difference that helps bridge that gap together. So that, in total, encompasses, is the reasoning behind the 825 acre request. So if council directs staff to proceed, you know, very similar to last March, when we talked about it, some of the next steps will be that staff will return to council with the resolution to formally proceed sometime in the fall. We will continue discussions with County of Fresno, LAFCO, as well as property owners in the area. We will also conduct a neighborhood outreach meeting with affected property owners, as well as property owners in the Dry Creek Preserve. And then we will also bring back an award to award a contract to environmental consultant to be able to do the environmental impact report and other technical studies that will help answer probably a lot of the questions that we may have, as well as preparation of a municipal services review, which is what LAFCO prepares to be able to study and make sure we have adequate capacity to handle that additional acreage. And then, finally, one of the steps would be preparation of the application to LAFCO to be able to proceed. So with that, staff recommends that the city council consider the information provided in the staff report as it relates to the 825 acres sphere of influence amendment. Staff's available for any questions.
Thank you, Ricky. Lynn?
Ricky, the LAFCO has had a sort of squaring off policy, if you will, for these sorts of actions. Was there any thought ever to go out to Perrin to square that off entirely, or no? Isn't that Perrin up there at the north?
Perrin is down a little.
So whatever that's.
Perrin's right here.
What's the street up there?
This is Beheimer up here.
Oh, Beheimer, okay.
So Beheimer, and then this would be Fowler.
So any thought of squaring off the whole area, or no?
Yeah, I think as part of the discussion, if we're able to proceed, is to be able to determine what the actual boundary would be, to be able to form that logical boundary, which you referred to. This is what was just requested by the project proponents, so you know, this is what we have before you. My best guess is that it'll be squared off somewhere, just to build a formal logical boundary. But part of that fact finding stage, if we move forward, is to determine that and work with the county and LAFCO.
And I think of the letters that we got on the dais, one of them speaks to, just found out about it, please don't proceed, but in fact, tonight's just to proceed. It would give people a chance, like Mr. Callister, the chance to weigh in, and all the neighbors out there, right?
That's correct.
So it isn't like this is happening right now. It's proceeding towards a decision on the expansion of a sphere.
That's exactly right.
So for folks like Mr. Callister who are worried that this is all occurring without them, it's really just occurring at the start with them. Yeah?
Yep, that's true.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lynn. Jose?
Ricky, you mentioned public meetings for people living in the preserve. How far down, as far as the other people, because there's people all the way to Harlan Ranch. So how, how much are you gonna, how more, how many more people are you going to reach as far as is what the law requires, or you can go beyond that, because?
I think unless directed otherwise by council, we would include all the Dry Creek Preserve, but then, as well as all the property owners, that would be part of the potential sphere. So we wouldn't necessarily go outside all the way to Harlan Ranch unless directed to do so.
The law requires you notify. To what degree?
The affected property owners, and then on top of that.
You know, what does that mean?
Whatever anybody inside the red line would be.
But nobody beyond that?
No. Unless there was a different entitlement. So for example.
So why are we notifying the preserve?
It's my understanding that the direction was that if there's projects in that general preserve area, that we notify the preserve.
So it's good for the, it's good for, there's a lot more people that are actually, Clovis are impacted by this, than people that live in Fresno County. Do you understand that?
Yeah, I understand.
Those are people that live in Fresno County.
And just to clarify, council has provided direction to staff that if there's any projects.
Yeah, but that was for a little chunk that we were considering before, and now that's changed. Now we're talking about a whole lot more people, and a whole lot of, the territory involved now, it's greater. So at least this council member would say, at least what is legally required along that periphery.
Okay.
Bob?
Ricky, can you give us an idea of how the rest of the areas that are within the sphere of influence are developing out? So specifically, Loma Vista, and then Heritage Grove. The, you know, I don't mind just showing all my cards. I'm, you know, I get concerned when we have large property owners who control a large section of the area in Loma Vista. There was one, and we were concerned that perhaps maybe that was never going to develop out, and then we would never be able to meet the demand for people who want to live in the city of Clovis. But then eventually, we met our entitlement requirement with the county, and then we moved over to Heritage Grove, where there is another large property owner. And I'm curious as to how, you know, quickly, in your mind, that area is developing, and if there is, if that is meeting the need that is out there for property in the city of Clovis.
Yeah, I think part of the need, at least with this, is that it provides additional options. In terms of Loma Vista, it's a little more than 60% built out. So in terms of capacity, there certainly is Heritage Grove. There hasn't been, you know, too much movement out there yet. So, you know, we've engaged with some of the property owners out there, but in terms of entitlements, we don't have anything, you know, in the pipeline, per se, in Heritage Grove areas.
When, over at Loma Vista, has there been anything presented to the city related to the McFarland property?
Nothing formal. We've had discussions, but there's been no applications submitted, no entitlements. So again, it's, you know, depending how you want to count what's in the pipeline, we don't have anything formal for that.
And there's been. And has there been any indication to you that there's going to be a delay of some of the development in Heritage Grove as a result of some concerns related to the economy?
I'm not aware of any. I'm sure there are, but just for what we have right now, we just don't have any actual entitlements there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Bob?
Ricky, can you educate me on sort of the process? It talks about an EIR, and then talk until LAFCO after the EIR, but then there's also discussion of potentially expanding the sphere, or the actual boundary line. So what happens first, or is that all together going, and then they'll determine, okay, do the EIR all the way up to outside these red lines? Can you help me with that?
Yeah. So if we're able to move forward, a lot of what we're going to do is engage with the county and LAFCO very early on, really for the reason that you stated. When we do the environmental impact report, we're going to want to know what the boundary is that the environmental impact report is studying. So that'll be, definitely be a crucial step, is talking with LAFCO and the county to establish that boundary, and what to include in the environmental and technical studies.
Okay. And then the EIR comes back before us to approve with the public process and all that, once it is completed. And sort of like what Councilmember Ashbeck said, that it would be a good time for some of them to address some of their concerns?
Exactly. Yeah. So part of the EIR, there would be, you know, a multitude of studies, you know, traffic, water, sewer, all those kind of questions would be answered at that time, you know, biological, cultural. It'll probably take about a 12-month process or so to prepare the EIR, and then throughout that process, there's guidelines for environmental review in terms of public review, commenting period, and whatnot. So.
Then after that, will be annexation master plan is waived after all, what you just said, correct?
Yeah, that would come at a later time, yes.
Okay.
Ricky, approximately, how many existing residences are in that affected area, do you know?
Yeah, when I was looking at the property owner list that we noticed for this, it was 139. Some of them were doubled up, so the actual properties were probably a little bit less. But if you have a couple of property owners on one property, it counts it. But it was 139 that the mailers went out to.
Okay. And is that pieces of property, I'm talking about buildings, do you know how many are actually residences or outbuildings?
Well, there are, I mean, there's certainly some residences out there, but when we pull our list, at least for legal noticing, it's whoever the registered property owner is of a piece of property. So, you know, if it's a vacant parcel, and someone lives, you know, out of state or whatever, they still would have got the notice for that.
Okay. And the, the environmental impact report, who pays for that? Is that paid for by the city? Does developer pay for that? Is that a shared cost?
That would, that would be the applicant in this case. So the applicant would bear that cost.
Okay. But the staff time, LAFCO face time, all that, that's, that's going to be on the city's dime, or is that paid for, is there reimbursement to the city on that?
So when we prepare EIRs, or have EIRs prepared, we do have a markup on there, which covers kind of those administrative costs, if you will, which is a 15% markup. So whatever the cost of the EIR is, whatever consultant, we add 15%, and that's to manage that process. If there's any subsequent entitlements, like a general plan amendment or track map, then we certainly still get fees for that, which go into the staff time, which involves, you know, talking with county or LAFCO.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Bob?
On the last page, you talked about negotiating amendment to the MOU, the tax sharing agreement with the county of Fresno. Is that just to add this into it, or is that actually a time in which we can negotiate terms as well?
I think as part of the sphere, that's one of the items that we'd want to explore with the county to build, to amend that. So as part of having this sphere go through, those are the discussions that we'd have to have with the county.
And so that's a time in which we, meaning the council, will be able to give input and direction on that agreement?
Yeah.
Or is that just done on a staff level?
That's correct. We would end up, as part of the entire process, we'd be required to bring back a, an amendment to the current tax sharing agreement, which would have to be approved by the city council.
Okay. And do, I guess, is that a good time for us to also talk about the details of it, to give direction to staff prior to all that, or is that sort of after the fact?
We could take direction. Generally, the amendment, in the past, we have not gone back and negotiated changes to the body of the amendment. We could typically negotiate different parameters for the scope of this area, but all of that would be up, I mean, we could always ask for an early amendment to the agreement, which I think goes through 2025?
Actually goes to 2030.
Okay. So the current agreement goes to 2030. So I think it would be a challenge to try to go back and negotiate changes to the area covered under the current agreement, but it would be more appropriate, I guess, to make changes on this area that's different than the current area. And there are some that we're looking at on that as well.
Okay. And if I could just expand one piece of that to Luke, is going to be that, as the current tax sharing agreement is written, when the city annexes after a sphere change, developed rural residential, we incorporate all of the cost and none of the revenue. So as we continue to take in developed rural residential, we need to take a look at the current tax sharing agreement, and this would be an opportunity for us to negotiate changes going forward. Excellent. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we are doing that, we will do that, especially some of this area has, what exactly we're talking about. So, thank you.
Any other questions for staff from council? Seeing none, I will open this up to members of the public. Yes, sir?
I live in that area, 9601 North Fowler. Been out there 32 years. First, I want to say it was a pretty underhanded thing for them to mail out the mailer. We got it on Friday, and expected people to be here on Monday. My neighbors are pretty upset. I was making phone calls last night. A lot of people didn't know about it, or the ones that got it, that short notice, were very upset. We don't want anything to do with Clovis. We don't want your sphere of influence. We like the way we live out there. People didn't buy their properties because they want to be in the city, and that's, that's what I say. We're not interested. We don't want it. The last time I was here, they asked to build this section over on, on Sunnyside and Shepherd, and everybody, all my neighbors came, a lot of people, they all said no, and guess what? They went ahead and did it anyway. So maybe what I'm saying doesn't mean anything, but maybe you ought to tear that sign down, too, because that's what's going away, is Clovis's way of life. We like living out there in our two and a half, and five and 10 acre places. Myself, I came from San Jose. Like I said, I've been here 32 years. My town was just like Clovis when I was a kid in the 60s growing up. Today, it's a crap hole. When you got too many people in too small an area, it's not good. It's bad. The smartest thing you guys could do, we have, is go in reverse, building moratoriums. You want to save Clovis, that's what you're going to have to do. Where I live on Fowler Avenue, we nickname it the Fowler Freeway now. People are racing up and down that street. Why? Because they built the big college and. Because they built the big colleges and schools out there. It's a mess. If you, if you want to make it good, you want to save this town, you got to quit the building. It's big enough. This town got long just fine when I first came here. It doesn't need to be any bigger. And I know my neighbors feel that way. We're going to put up a hell of a fight. We do not want Clovis's sphere of influence at all. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Thanks, sir. Any member of the Public Dress Council on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Dirk Pushel and my business address is nine-two-three Van S. in Fresno. I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Ricky, as typical, did a very thorough job of providing you the history of the issues associated with the sphere of influence change. We just want to make a few points and then we'll sit down and let other people speak. But over the past few months, since March, when the council directed that dispensely, which you know as dispensely property, proceed, it gave us an opportunity to reevaluate potential for traffic studies, air quality studies, a whole range of things that we knew were going to be necessary for dispensely property. But we also spoke to LAFCO and in some instances the county and had numerous conversations with city staff. And principally because this area was already in the, the general plan in nineteen ninety-three and again reaffirmed at the latest updated plan, we thought it made a lot of sense to essentially create a larger planning area where we could more comprehensively evaluate air quality, sewer, water, all of the things that we think are necessary for a good community. We want to do that because our goal is develop something like we did at Harlan Ranch, where Wilson Homes can control a large palette of land and can create a really special product. And we know that's a long process and it's an expensive process. And for that reason, creating this larger area gave us an opportunity to create some economies of scale. We want to assure the council that when we bring this project back, it's not only going to be a quality project, but it's not going to be a project that's fiscally detrimental to the community. And what I mean by that is that there would be some tax problem associated with either the MOU or demand on services that the city would find unacceptable. The other advantage to expanding into this area, as you can see in that kind of blue-gray area along Shepherd, is the utilities are already in Shepherd Avenue. So, we already have stormwater, sewer water, storm drain utilities. So, that provides this particular piece of property with an excellent jump off point, if you will, for urban services. When I say that, the project will still be subject to municipal service review, which is a comprehensive process, takes probably a year in its own right, that is conducted by LAFCO to assure that all those services are available. We will recommit this evening to an extensive and very comprehensive neighborhood outreach. We feel very proud about our efforts over the past decades in doing so. That doesn't mean that we're going to bring a room full of happy people, but we can certainly try the best we can to explain why this project makes some sense for the community and for Clovis. We're also committing to a comprehensive environmental impact report. I think his staff is probably a bit optimistic. I think it's probably going to take a little longer than a year. We know that it's going to address a whole range of issues and those are the issues that the neighbors are going to be most interested in, traffic, air quality, impact, wildlife, et cetera, water. But we're prepared to hire the best in the region to prepare that environmental impact report. And lastly, again, our goal is to, to take this property that's somewhat been defined by others, by the county and LAFCO, work with your staff, work with LAFCO, work with the county, come up with a defined area and then comprehensively study it and sometime in the future, if the council is of the mind this evening to let us start, bring back a really quality project that we can all be proud of. So, we ask that you support the project as recommended by your staff and we thank you and their, and them for all of their work.
Any questions for Mr. Pushel?
Good question. Well, Dirk, for the EIR and the sort of municipal service review, do those run parallel or does, does the EIR have to finish and then it'll come after? So, it's really a two-year before you can do anything?
It's probably going to be that the EIR starts and gets some of the initial discussions about impacts and gets well into the evaluation of air, water, sewer, storm drain capacity, where's the water going to come from, impact on wells, et cetera. Then the municipal service review can kind of lag behind. But at the end of, at the end of this entire process, I think Councilmember Ashbeck alluded to it, this all comes back to the council as a package. So, it's all, it's all interrelated and the EIR has to address all of the different actions that the council is going to evaluate and ultimately, we hope, approve. So, it's a comprehensive environmental document, studies a wide range of topics and a wide range of other permits other than just the sphere of influence change. Mr. Wilson would like to say a few words as well.
Okay. Any other member of the Public Dress Council on this item?
Good evening, Council. Norman Morrison. There's a saying that I can recall from reading some books about World War II with Douglas MacArthur and it was a saying about other generals didn't want to let him around because they were afraid of him getting the elephant's nose underneath the tent and starting to lift it and get in. That's exactly what we're seeing here. Mr. Wilson started with a fifty-something acre parcel, then it became a seventy-five, eighty acre and now we're up to six-hundred and something, I believe? Why? Nothing's changed. He should have done it, if he wanted to do it with the six-hundred, he should have done it initially, not now, not after multiple attempts and not without giving notice to people. I have not received any notice for this. I found out about it by getting an email from the city council's automated service saying that there was a meeting this week. I just happened to open it up and look at the agenda and boom, wow, this is six-hundred acre something development that's being proposed. Well, it's a scope of EIR, but Mr. Pushel pretty much made it clear, this is going to be a development. So, it needs to be looked at for that purpose. There was no outreach. My neighbors didn't know about this till I notified some of them about what I had seen in the email. And it seems like there's no notice given to the others. I heard a comment earlier from one of the council members about, why are we noticing the DCP? More people are affected than they, they're just counting. More people in Clovis are affected. You're notifying the DCP because this directly affects us. This affects our roads, our way of life, and if this goes through, you have cut us off. We are now truly an island. That is what terrifies most of the DCP members. By becoming an island, they believe, and I don't know if it's right or wrong, but their belief is, next thing they're going to know is they're going to get another notice from the city saying, we're moving to annex you in over your own desires, which they know that you can do for certain, with certain limits. That's why you're noticing the DCP. This affects us. This project, there are two roads that they're going to use, Fowler and Sunnyside. Fowler is already over impacted. Sunnyside can't handle this. Talking six-hundred and something with the amount that he normally puts in in the developments to date, you're talking thousands of people. They're not going to drive way out of their way down to Clovis, which is already going to be impacted with Heritage Grove. And moreover, there's no need for this project. You already have Heritage Grove. You have other projects that have been approved, that went through the process, that years ago looked forward and said, we want to develop. We're going to step through the hoops. They've done that. Now, you're allowing some to jump in and basically compete with them at the last minute and add potentially thousands of homes that really there's no call for. And beyond that, I don't think that there's really any infrastructure for them. You don't have road infrastructure out there. The schools can't afford to build new schools without taking out huge bond measures and the development, developers pay four bucks a square foot. That's not enough to build a school. So, they're taking out bonds. We saw what happened with the last bond. So, they build these developments where the kids going to go? Where's your water going to come from? I've heard repeatedly, oh, we've got plenty of water in Clovis. I've never heard what your priority is for the, for the river. Never. So, you may have plenty of water rights, but if they're so junior that they're inconsequential, it doesn't mean you have water. You guys just passed a huge increase on water hookup fees recently to afford to pay for future development. That was without even considering this. So, what's the next round of development going to be? When he develops this and you've got to go out and buy even more water? Is the rate that people are going to have to connect going to go from, I believe it was thirteen thousand or something like that to twenty-six thousand to connect? Clovis has hit its development. I don't think there's any call for this particular development. You've got Heritage Grove. Wait until Heritage Grove develops out and see what's needed. Wait until they even get started to be built and sold and see what's needed. The other thing I haven't heard is, in addition to not noticing people, I haven't heard, there's, the council said, I believe that there are, the members said, I believe there's a hundred and thirty-eight or a hundred and thirty-six property owners out there. How many of them are in support of this? We haven't heard that. We've heard from one, Leo Wilson Homes. That's it. You've heard from others who were affected by it that said no. I remember the last meeting, there were other landowners here who said, no, we don't want it near us. Don't mean to be harsh, but I mean, reality is, is you're getting the reputation of just becoming another Fresno. And I hear a lot about the Clovis way of life and the Clovis way of life, as the gentleman before me said, and I hate to break it, it's dead. That way of life is gone. The only horses that you're seeing in Clovis now is on that sign in the fairgrounds and in the few of us who still have large lots. The only thing that reminds Clovis of its agricultural past are getting to be the tombstone signs and subdivisions saying such and such ranch. Want to know how the people in Clovis are interacting? It's as he said, it's not a happy joy-joy situation living in Clovis. Go online to next door, see what people are actually saying about the Clovis way of life. Because there's so many people getting in here in so many different areas, you can't keep compacting them in. And the other point that we've got that I think scares a lot of people in the DCP is when you read Leo Wilson's stuff, he says he's planning on putting a development in the Dry Creek. That property isn't the Dry Creek, that's stuff to the north, we're the Dry Creek to the south. So, if he's saying he's planning on doing development in the Dry Creek, what's he talking about? And why hasn't that been discussed or disclosed? So, those are the concerns you've got. I expect the council's going to vote to go ahead with this, as it has. That's reality. But when I have a ten-year-old daughter who basically said, why is Clovis doing this? Why do they want to become Fresno? That's your future. Thank you.
Ricky, what, Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You said you read the report?
Yes.
And did you notice what it said and why I asked my question?
I walked in late, so if I misspoke, I apologize, but I know that I have heard that comment from you in the past.
Well, I do believe and I strongly believe and I will always believe that the Clovis way of life only belongs to people that live in Clovis and that, and that's defined by the city limits of Clovis. So, if you live beyond the city limits of Clovis, you do not enjoy the Clovis way of life. You enjoy the Fresno County way of life. And by, this report only says that it would notify the people impacted and you. And I think legally, we also have to notify all those people that are north, I mean, south of that proposal. That's all I was asking.
Okay. But I, in all, in all fairness, council member, I have heard...
That belongs to the citizens of the city of Clovis, the people who I represent.
But council member, I don't mean to get into an argument with you on here. My point is that we are the county. We've been the county. My house was built before the city of Clovis expanded its initial sphere of influence out to our area. I didn't live there, obviously, then, but it was there before. You came to us. You have kept coming to us. We have been gracious neighbors, but even though you say we don't get these benefits, we may, what you're saying is, we don't get these benefits, but we get all of the detriment. We get your traffic. We get your noise. We get your crime. We get your water use. We get your big trucks rumbling by. We get all of that and we're in the county. So, it's kind of not exactly an honest point to say that we don't enjoy the Clovis way of life, when really what you're saying is, you don't enjoy the way of life, you just enjoy everything, the downside of it.
No, I would disagree once more. I think you benefit from us being so close to you for many reasons. We could debate this all day long and...
And I would certainly be willing to do that off the time, councilman. I don't want to turn this into an open debate.
And therefore, our issue is this, we need to take care of our city. And, and guess what? We've always been good neighbors. That's why we did the things with DCP as we've done it. We try to be good neighbors. You don't want to be part of us, we'll, we'll go around you and try to be the best neighbors we can. But we still have to be a city. That's why we get elected. And we will try to do the best we can for the citizens of Clovis while taking care of those people that are our neighbors. And we do take you into account. We do. And evidence is that we've negotiated with you for twenty years or plus.
And my only counterpoint, and I don't want to take up that, again, I'd be more than happy to meet you off any time of your convenience, but these people, which it's property you're looking at now with county, it's not city. You're looking at making it city. And so, that's a different scenario. The city has plenty of other areas to grow. It's still got Heritage Grove that has only just begun. They've only just, they haven't even finished the, putting in the road. They haven't even paved them yet and you're already looking at bringing in six-hundred something additional acres for future development. That's our concern. The other concern is, as I said, with this development, you're looking at completely locking us off and you have a lot of people out there who are looking at the, at the city and you have a lot of people, and I can tell you and I've told the board this before, you have a lot of people in the DCP who don't trust the city because of prior actions, prior agreements that haven't been honored. So, and I've addressed those in the past. So, when they see that this is going to block it off, they're getting worried. When they see something in the report saying Leo Wilson plans to build a development in the Dry Creek, they get very nervous.
Mr. Morrison, I'm going to need you to wrap.
No, that's fine. I'm, as I said, I'd be more than happy to meet with any of the council members to discuss most of the concerns. And I think that would probably be a more appropriate venue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the council chambers wish Dress Council on this item? Mr. Wilson?
Leo Wilson, seventy-five fifty North Palm. I don't know where he gets that we're going to build in the Dry Creek. I like a copy of it. I've never planned on building in the Dry Creek and I don't plan on it now. There is a need and we don't want to hurt the property which we have, which we're building in right now, the new one's just approved, Heritage Grove. We're not needing, we don't want to hurt them at all. Well, we did the Southeast Village, Loma Vista. We had Harlan Ranch in there. We had property, I know that we bought a four hundred acres into the sphere of influence at that time that we did not own, do not own, have not built on, but other people have. It has been developed very, very nice. There's been, the city put money, reduced their fees so they could continue building in Fresno in bypassed areas. I know that we did four or five tracks there and a lot of other people did tracks there too. We plan on building in Heritage Grove if we can. We own approximately four hundred, five hundred acres, maybe six, somewhere around there, and we plan on building there and it's going to be very successful. You ask any builder in town that's building here, they do not have the availability to buy property anywhere. Property in, we bought some property in Fresno and one piece of property was a hundred thousand dollars. Then we said, what do we do if we close early? He said, we'll knock ten thousand dollars off, so we got for ninety. The next one was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand and the other one's about a hundred and forty thousand. So, property and from what I hear, it's much more than that in Heritage Grove and the city and the stuff that they've appraised is much more that in that area. It's going to be pretty soon and where you don't have, you can't buy the worker bees, where are we going to put them? What, what houses are we going to put them in? I know a lot of people don't like the elevations. We have in their neighborhood, but after they're there, they're very, very good. We have doctors, we have dentists, we have teachers, we have people that run businesses, we have kids right out of colleges, college. That's a great, it's three hundred, over three hundred thousand dollars now. It's a great project. We have great people there. We don't have any people to go out and tear the city apart, don't do this, don't do that. We have to have housing for everybody. We have to have housing for everybody. And we plan on building on the, in fact, in Heritage Grove, and now we're doing one elevations, and right next to it, we're doing Chadwick, which backs right up to it, which go up to six, fifty, seven hundred thousand dollars. So you know, we know we can move the two economic groups together, but we've got people in the elevations that are gonna be, if not more, they'll make more money than a lot of people that are in Chadwick today. They're starting their climb. We don't wanna hurt anybody. We didn't go out there to not notify, and this is just for the sphere of influence. We didn't put the rest of this in, but by the time we look at all the costs to do the seventy-five, eighty acres, whatever it is there, if we wanna do this, it doesn't make any sense. I never heard, I have never heard anything derogative about Hardin Ranch. I think we're gonna do, try, at least try to do a better job than it's over there now. This is, people have to have a place to live. The city and the school system cannot live without building, without some future building. The county, the city of Clovis can't either. We've gotta supply housing for the people that come here, your children and your grandchildren. And if somebody doesn't want us to annex them, we don't wanna annex them. Let them stay there. Let them have their acreage. But today, if you live on our acreage, I tell you guys, they couldn't afford to buy that same acreage today. It's very, very expensive. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Wilson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, anyone else in the council chambers wish to address council on this item?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Arakel Arisian. My business address is three eighty-nine Clovis Avenue, Suite one hundred. I'm here on behalf of the Rakuti family and Heritage Development Company. We've been working closely with city staff on our projects in the area. Recently completed the row, which is a mixed-use project on Shepherd and Willow, and also working with Lenar Homes on the subdivision on the northeast corner of Shepherd and Clovis. When we heard about the new enlarged sphere, we were interested to learn more about what was proposed and also what the process will be like. Obviously, there have been many conversations about expanding the sphere in different directions, and even as far back as the general plan update, we discussed possibly amending the sphere up north of Copper and bringing in that area from Willow to Sunnyside. It would be a logical extension of Heritage Grove to the north. So if this is the appropriate time to be discussing sphere expansions, we're excited. We'd love to be part of that process, and we would submit that, those properties to your consideration as well. Alternatively, if this were a part of a general plan update process, you know, obviously, that would be discussed at the same time. So in terms of this specific request, I think one thing we would like considered by the analyses and the studies and your consideration is the availability of infrastructure. Obviously, there are, is infrastructure in Shepherd Avenue, but as we learned during the impact, the master planning process for the sewer water, recycled water, and also the impact fee process, we learned that there is limited number of capacity in our current system. And the discussion at the time was, we would develop in Heritage Grove, those units would pay into the fund, and then the fund would be able to do future improvements to be able to move to the northern portions of Heritage Grove and other areas. So when we found out about this on Friday, we were having, we have a monthly Heritage Grove meeting with city staff where we share our plans, and that's when we found out about this, coming to council. And at the time, staff was not certain as to which areas the sewer and water fall into, what the availability of units are, but that's something we'd like to work closely with. Obviously, the applicant also has several hundred acres in Heritage Grove and would like to develop those acres, so there has to be some coordinating in terms of infrastructure to make sure that the work that we're doing in Heritage Grove can continue in addition to anything else that the city decides to do. I think the last thing that I wanna bring up that's been referenced, both by council members, also by applicants and other people, is the availability of land in Heritage Grove and what activity there is in Heritage Grove. And there's a comment in the justification letter that there is limited urban conversions in Heritage Grove. I could not disagree with that more. We are working on it daily. I personally am working on it on almost daily basis, working to figure out what the next project is. The Lenar project that we partnered, Rakuti family partnered with Lenar Homes, that's five hundred and eighty lots that is under construction now, as you drive by. Wilson Homes recently approved their forty-acre product right across the street, and we're now focused on the area of Miniwawa to Willow, Shepherd to Beeheimer. So we actually, we're going to submit a map that was about the same size as the ranch, that's the Shepherd and Clovis property, but in talking with city staff with the new VMT ordinances, we decided to do a larger master plan and with all the associated environmental reviews. So that allowed, you know, necessitated us to create a different schedule, but we are now working with them and talking about submitting an application for that entitlement, which would be a larger master plan that would, you know, be several thousand lots that are already planned for in the area. So we're committed to continue to work with the city. Obviously, we're very interested to make sure that the plans that we have in place are able to move forward, and as always, I just wanna reassure you how hard the family and our team is working on seeing Heritage Grove develop. We're now working on additional multifamily products to bring to market. I think that will be an option for some people who are unable to buy a home. In addition to all the different products that are included in the projects that we're involved in, the Lenar project has four different product types, so has everything from small lot, smaller square footage, up to their pinnacle property. So we are working very diligently on this, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have one.
Jose?
Your multifamily projects, would that be within the affordable housing parameters?
Right now, what we've developed is a market-rate housing product, so it's basically whatever the market would bear in that area. Still undetermined as to what the future projects would be. You know, the multifamily, even at the market rate, provides people an opportunity to move into an area if maybe they don't have a large down payment or something of that note. But I can tell you, we've had, knock on woods, great success leasing our project, and we're seeing a wide range of people interested, different, some from out of town, people returning, they now have the opportunity to work from home, so they're coming back, and some people who are getting into their first, you know, place out of the house, you know, young adults, we've got it all. So I think we'll continue to look at that and see what provisions that the city has. We've talked to the city about meeting that twenty-unit threshold, because even though that technically doesn't mean you're affordable, but the state views it as affordable, and we've talked about in the Shepherd and Willow area, being in that twenty to thirty units or more so that we could get the, get the, towards the housing credits for that piece of it, for our housing obligation.
Any other questions?
I was interested in your comment with regards to sphere above Copper and how, what is your vision? How does that work with the current discussion? Can it be included in which it's not connected at all?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be something that's intended to occur in the sequence that we currently have in the general plan. Like in the general plan, you know, we have the northwest village, Heritage Grove, which is proceeding, and then there, we actually had a sphere expansion in the northeast, so that is potentially proceeding in the future. And then the idea would be, when we bring infrastructure up to Copper, it would be a natural to have that extend north. And if you remember, we had proposed this idea of taking Auberry and curving it to Clovis Avenue to truly make us the gateway to the Sierras, and that would allow us to do that, and that whole area then could be developed. So, I mean, whatever the appropriate time between your direction and staff for us to bring that forward right now, it's kind of unclaimed territory, and you know, you hear things about which city that's going to be, but Rakuti family's committed to Clovis and would love to bring that forward. So whenever the appropriate time, whether it's concurrent with this or separate or part of a general plan amendment, we'd like to bring that to the table.
Thank you, Erica. Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wish to address council on this item? Seeing none, I will close comments inside chambers. Do we have anyone on the web?
Yes, we have Mr. Jared Callister. Jared, you are unmuted.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the city council's time, and interesting to hear from the developers give their comments today. I just wanna make one point that's really important to me, and I think it's important bearing in mind, is if you're gonna consider a sphere change, which is gonna go up to more than eight hundred acres, where the developer's told us he wants to do a master plan community, I think you've gotta give property owners more than, you know, a day's notice. And I got my notice Saturday. Many of our neighbors didn't get the notice or weren't aware of it, and it's tough to have less than, you know, basically one day's bit to get this, to process it, to even look at it, when you're talking about a massive sphere of influence change. And I know I've heard the council say, "Well, this is just the beginning. We're gonna have community outreach." But it seems to me that if the city approves this, right now, the recommendation, and that's gonna start the EIR studies, so you're gonna have the developer spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on this study for this change, and then you're gonna go back and tell the developer, "Oh, no, never mind. We're gonna shrink it back down to the original, you know, eighty acres by the Spenceley property." I think that's highly unlikely. So I just think, if the city council is really seriously considering this, and maybe this is a great thing for Clovis, maybe this is what it needs, I think we need to at least postpone this a little bit to let homeowners in the area, in the community, really ascertain what this means for them. We have people that live in Shenandoah Estates that this is news for them. They don't know what it means to be in a sphere of influence, well, how that's gonna change things. And it seems to me that, it's not like, yes, I realize technically this is the beginning of the process, but it seems to me that once you, to do EIRs, you are basically telling the developer, "Yeah, this'll come in eventually. We'll, you know, we'll be a back and forth on certain things," but you're basically saying, "Yeah, this area's gonna get developed." And I just think, you know, to go from the initial request, which was just, you know, the eighty-acre Spenceley property plus the quail-run community, that was the initial request, all of a sudden adding in another six hundred acres, that's a big request. And I would just, it seems to me that if you're gonna let him go forward and pay money for an EIR, you're basically saying, "Yeah, this is gonna come in, we'll have, you know, we'll haggle over the details on the densities and other things." But it seems like we oughta get the community a bit more notice, 'cause otherwise, the community involvement is an afterthought. And nothing's worse than going to a community meeting and the way it's pitched to you is basically, "This is going through, it's already approved, and, you know, FYI, this is what's happening." And that's sometimes how these community involvement meetings feel, is that as, you know, the developer's working with the city behind the scenes for months, planning this, discussing this with the city planners or the planning division, and then all of a sudden, we get, you know, the public finds out about it, you know, twenty-four hours before the hearing. So I just think, just in terms of matter of fairness, you gotta at least let the community know and have some participation and voice their concerns before you give the green light to have the developer spend all this money, 'cause then you're committed. You know, it just, I really doubt the city council's gonna let developers spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and then turn around and say, "Oh, no, we're gonna go back, we're gonna shrink this down back to what it was before." I just find that unlikely. I also wanna point out that something that Mr., I think it was Arisian, it's at Arakel, who's with the Rakutis, he pointed out that the justification for this is, really, the only justification is to meet housing demand, and the justification is, "Well, Heritage Grove isn't developing fast enough or isn't big enough." Well, that was directly contradicted by Mr. Arakel. He said the exact opposite, that, yeah, Heritage Grove is developing and has enough to meet these demands. So I just think we need to slow down and figure out exactly what's going on if we're gonna consider this massive monumental sphere of influence change. And I just wanna point out, ever since the county approved the March sphere of influence, at least request to consider the Spenceley property, additional forty acres in Quell Run, we haven't heard a word from the developer on this. None. Zero community outreach for us. So I just think the city council owes the community to give us a chance to actually really be heard on this, and not after the fact, after they spent all the money, after it's already going off there, after you're on the ninety-nine yard line. We need some real input on the front end as opposed to the back end on this process. So that's my sense on this. Maybe it's a great idea, maybe it's a horrible idea, but you really owe it to the community to give us a chance to have our voices heard before you give the green light to do all the environmentals.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for this gentleman? Lynn?
I do have a question. Thank you for your comments, but, so, not but, and this question's for staff. So in the staff report on this item, there isn't, usually it says, you know, neighbors notified forty-six or three or whatever the number is. What is the noticing? 'Cause I see this a little differently. This is just a policy direction. This is really, so I can understand, Jared, your comments. I'm just trying to get clear in my mind, what is the noticing requirement on policy direction for staff to notify anybody of this action? Does that make sense? And so how did, I'm sorry to call you Jared, but I can't remember your last name. Callister, sorry. Mr. Callister, how would he have gotten a notice? So what's happening here? What's the process?
So this is, it's not the ninety-nine yard line, it is the starting line.
Right.
Policy direction, there is not a noticing requirement legally. We did go above and beyond that and notify the properties that were within the area.
So within this yellowy area here, is that right? Or within what area?
Within the red boundary.
Within where?
Within the red line. So anything that's within that red line.
The whole red line space.
That's correct. That's who we noticed for this one.
Okay.
So what we're doing here is, we're seeking policy direction to start having all of these discussions. We can't have a discussion about water impacts until we determine what the water impacts are. We can't go determine what the water impacts are until you give us direction to. We can't start having public meetings until you give us direction. So all we're asking here is for policy directions to begin studying the feasibility of this sphere change.
Okay. I mean, that's how I see it, but I can understand Mr. Callister and two gentlemen in the audience. My memory used to be so good. Morrison and, what was your last name, sir?
Callis.
Callis?
Callis.
So I hear what you're saying, too. I'm just trying, I don't think, I don't think I've ever noticed a notice, a policy direction. It's an interesting question. That's why I was asking the question about, 'cause it really isn't anything. It's just a, it's just a, should you take a larger look? But it's not an action of any kind. There's no bulldozer coming tomorrow or potentially ever, but, so I'm just trying to be clear on the process of that, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Callister, for your comments.
Anyone, now we're on the web still. Do we have anybody else on the web?
Yes, we have Jen Call.
Yes, Jen.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. First, I'd like to echo what Mr. Callister said. The noticing was very last minute, it would appear, which I know it wasn't intentional, but definitely feels underhanded to the people out here. And it was interesting that someone there pointed out that it wasn't legally required to notify people who's, who are being swept into this sphere of influence. That seems really ironic to me, and I think that would be an absolute requirement. However, that wasn't what had me concerned. What I was concerned about, you had mentioned you wanted to keep the way of Clovis life for those people who live within the city of Clovis, and someone mentioned you didn't wanna be compared to Fresno. I, too, came from San Jose many years ago, and I was baffled when I came here on how some things were done here. And what was really crazy would be to drive down a semi-sizable thoroughfare and have it go from four lanes down to two lanes. And then I heard the term county island, and that's why that was there. And it created bottlenecks and created traffic problems, and it really- And it created bottlenecks and created traffic problems, and it really looked like something was not well planned. And now it appears that that's what we're trying to do here, is make it county island. By the way, I do live in Shenandoah Estates over here, if you want to know my location. And so I'm, I've always thought, it's like, why, with all the open land here, do we keep, or does Clovis keep growing in and around existing properties and making these ridiculous county islands? And it seems like there's plenty of open space. And I thought, you know, if I was in charge, which I'm not, and you guys are, I would not allow that. It's like, I'm not gonna create a problem for future by doing this. Certainly, there are other areas where someone could grow that would not have to encapsulate county properties, even with the promise of never, you know, changing their way of life in the county. It certainly impacts the city. And if I was the city of Clovis, I wouldn't want to have the reputation of having all these county islands throughout that do create problems. We live within Shenandoah, and when Harlan Ranch went in, we have a street that you may know goes right through the middle of our development off of Shepherd. And we had cars coming down that residential street at 50 miles an hour. So we contacted the sheriff, and the sheriff said, "No, you, I'm sorry, but we can't do anything about it because you don't have 14, I think the number was, homes that line that street." So the speed limit there, in reality, is 50 miles per hour, even though you have children playing in your front yard. I know that's the same on Sunnyside, where it's becoming more of a thoroughfare with the road being shut down on Shepherd, that that's impacted. So I would just suggest that the city evaluate this need for growth. I don't know that it makes your city any better by growing. I'm not sure that that's a justifiable concern. I wouldn't mind hearing why you think growth has to happen in order to be a successful city. I don't see any sense to that. We can always go out and develop new cities in open areas and probably do a lot better job of master planning where we don't have to create county islands because we're overextending our bounds into an already developed area. You know, when lots are 20, 30, 40 acres, then you have some opportunity to buy an existing home that comes with 40 acres, tear it down, and then incorporate that. But when you build a circle around two-acre lots, people like Mr. Wilson would not want to go and pay a premium to buy those properties, which in reality, it makes sense to do. Maybe you, someone on council could address why it makes sense to have county islands within your city. And I guess I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for, I think it's last name Jen?
Call.
I'm sorry.
The last name is Call.
Call, thank you, sir. Do we have anybody else on the web?
No.
I got a, I got a text message from a woman named Erin Fanning. Is she no longer on?
She's not online.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, we'll close public comments on the web. Mr. Clerk, did we have any comments other than what you gave to us?
No, I just, for the record, note that you do have an addendum in front of you for item number seven, which has seven emails that were received over the weekend.
Great, thank you. I will close public comments and come back to council for discussion. Staff has asked that we give some direction on who should be noticed as we go forward, and so that obviously needs to be part of our direction to council. Who would like to open up the discussion on this? Bob?
Now, I look at sphere growth. Okay, before I do that, Ricky, other than the Northeast that came about a year ago, do you know the last time we had a sphere change?
Yeah, it would've been the 2014-15 where we brought in about another 900 acres in the Heritage Grove area. That was the last time.
That was the last one, okay. So I look at this as planning. We may not want to grow, the state is making us grow. So growing in units. So we can do what we've done, which is put overlays and ruin people's way of life. Because I came here, there's an empty lot that can put 50-story apartments to fit what's gonna come. And it's gonna come, and the number's gonna be five, six times the units that we have had in this current cycle. And I see that the only way we prepare for that is to plan ahead. And I think we're already behind. I believe, like Mr. Arikell, that we need to talk about copper, we need to talk about this, we need to talk about the Northeast. Because it's gotta be mandated, and what best for us than to go, "We've got all those units covered because we planned for it here. Here's the maps, here's all the multifamily, here's a single family." But if we don't do that, we will be behind the ball. And the length of time it takes, those plans don't, you know, it doesn't go, "Oh, we have to challenge it in court, and it can take a while, and we don't have to give the state a plan." We have to give it a certain time. These things can take five years, 10 years, depending on what it is, before it really becomes something viable, before we even reach the master plan point of the process. So because of that, I feel that if we want to maintain what the city of Clovis wants in safety, in trails and parks, we have to plan for it. And this is the only way, because if not, then all of us will be very upset when the lot behind me becomes, you know, the 35-unit-per-acre multifamily that potentially can come on because of the rules of the state. And so that is the main motivation for me. When I see this project, and when I saw that it expanded, I was more excited than I was scared. Because I'm hoping the county makes us square it off, so that way it's uniform. And I think that by doing this, at least it gives us the evidence and the studies to see if it's viable, if it's not viable. It may come back and, you know, we may find out it's, we can't even do it. But at least this leads us in that direction. And so I know that this is developer-driven. I would, on a sign note, encourage the city to make it city-driven on the other areas in which no developer has come in. Because if we stop, Fresno's gonna come over and be like Pac-Man and eat us in. And so we have to be proactive, especially north of Copper, and preserve that, and put a stake in the ground, and say, "That's our sphere." And we have to be ready, and recover the fees, by us initially recover, developing ways to recover the fees when it does develop. That's my sense in what I see, what the city has going and what's presented in front of us. So I am in support of it growing to this level and beginning the discussions, thank you.
Jose?
What's reported is an expansion of our sphere of influence and 825 acres of expansion. That's it. It's nothing more, no shovels, we're gonna, we'll be there tomorrow. This launches public meetings after public meetings after public meetings after public meetings. And so the public will have plenty of times to meet with the city, the county, LAFCO, to discuss what this all means and how it might impact their neighborhoods. What are the pros, what are the cons? And, you know, should they be for or against it? But that's all that's reported today. It's not required to notice too many people. But next time, next time it will be. And that's why in the report it said that all those people impacted within that zone would be notified, and the people in the DCP would be notified. But I also want those people that are impacted to the south to also be, you know, legally notified, those who we have to by law notify. And because now there's a lot of neighbors just to the south. Yeah, because they will be impacted too. They live there now, they're citizens of Clovis, because that's actually in the city of Clovis. And they'll have a say what happens to the north of them. I think it's reasonable for a city to start considering what will happen and control what will happen near its city. That's what a sphere of influence is. It's laying claim to land and say, "This is ours, we're gonna plan for it. We're gonna start saying what goes in there, what can't go in there, and we're gonna do the long-term planning for that place." And that's all it means. And we will seek the participation of all the people involved, county residents and city residents. We have always been good neighbors as we encroach on our county neighbors. We do believe in the Clovis way of life, and we do believe that the county neighbors have a stake in what we become. And we don't like county islands. We don't want county islands. We would love if, as we approach a neighborhood that's been developed in the county, that they would love us back and become part of the city. But sometimes that doesn't happen. We have, the only county island we still have in the city is Tarpe, and that's it. We have one county island, or correct me if I'm wrong. No, that's it. One county island, so Clovis has not encroached and created county islands. We're about to create a second one, and that is the DCP. But it's not our fault. We tried and tried and tried to try to get those folks to love us. But we love them, and we will work with them, and we will be as close, they will be as close as Clovis can be for people that live in Fresno County. But they're still Fresno County, and I'll stick to my guns on that one. And, but, so, like Von said, we need long-term planning for our city, and that's why I have been, that's why I will support this.
Lynn?
Not too much more to add. I've always been a proponent for casting a wider net relative to planning. Letting Clovis plan better than anyone. And I think we end up with county islands and things we don't want when we can't control it. And I don't mean control in a creepy way, I mean, control in a visionary way, that you can imagine the future for a piece of, in this case, this acreage. I also think it doesn't mean anything has to happen to folks inside who don't want to do anything. I mean, it's, this isn't, this is still, you know, it's a democracy, you don't have to do anything. It just gives the city a chance to have a plan. And that's, I think that's the magic. And I think every time we have been unhappy with our planning, it's because we bumped into something we weren't able to control until it was too late. And then you end up with something around it that doesn't work, and then people are unhappy. And it just, it doesn't ever end well. I mean, that, I think that we know for sure. So I just use it as a chance to plan broader. I, whatever street that is, because I can't remember what you told me, Beheimer. I mean, I think we should square it off, and I'm, I mean, I agree with Jose. I feel like the more we can imagine our future, the better off we'll be in a generation. Not today, in a generation, and that's what we're trying to plan for. Nothing we will see, surely not in my lifetime, but 50 years from now, could be something really interesting out there. And I think we have one chance to kind of plant that flag. And I guess, without getting overly personal, Mr. Morrison, the Clovis way of life is not dead. And I think it lives inside people. It doesn't live inside a sign, it doesn't live inside a development, and it lives inside the people that live here. And they live here because they share the values of the community. So I take that a little bit personally. I don't think that's true. I think people on Nextdoor, that is no, that is no barometer of Clovis's way of life. Just like social media is no barometer of most things. So of all the things you said, I could debate lots of them, but I'll just push back on that. And it's not dead, and we, this council, councils before us, councils ahead of us, are gonna work hard to protect it. And it's not about this. It's about the people who live here and the way we live our, run our city, and people are safe. At the end of the day, that's sort of what makes Clovis special. So I'm not gonna buy into the Clovis way of life's dead, sorry. Anyway, that's it.
Bob?
Thank you. I'd first like to thank the council for starting over there, and then coming over here. And I appreciate all the comments that have been mentioned by my colleagues in the council. I, you know, these council direction conversations are really helpful for me, and I hope they're helpful for staff. It's a real kind of broad conversation that maybe provides some broad direction to staff. The, in my view, I guess I'm, I'll just share that, you know, when I first got on the Clovis City Council, I was always very proud of the way that the city of Clovis handled planning, still am. The idea was that we would be very organized and disciplined in our approach. We recognize that, for whatever reason, the product, if you will, of the city of Clovis has value. And I think it's for a lot of the reasons that my colleagues in the council have said. The, that orderly development, when I initially got on the council, was focused on Loma Vista. People were very concerned about how the city of Clovis was growing, that it was growing too fast, and that we were going to become another Fresno or some other community that people would describe in disparaging words. When we started to develop over in Loma Vista, I liked the idea of us not going anywhere else until it was 60% entitled. I thought that would cause rooftops to develop in Loma Vista, which would eventually lead to retail, which was an important component of that village concept. Without houses, there's gonna be no, you know, community in the sense of a gathering spot, whether it's coffee shops, or restaurants, or grocery store of some kind, where people can just walk and ride their bike or drive to. We're starting to see that now in Loma Vista, and it's taken a lot of years to get there, and, you know, a recession and a half to get there. So if, though, we started to spread out where it is that we wanted to develop, I would be concerned that there would never, we would never get that enough rooftops at a particular location that would make sense for retail of some kind or commercial of some kind to develop there. So that orderly development is something that I really like. Once we reached our 60% entitlement and things were kind of on their way over there in Loma Vista, continue to be on their way there. Hopefully, the McFarlands will come in with a proposal that'll bring more rooftops. It will create even more energy so that there is a strong sense of community. But once we got there, then we looked at Heritage Grove. And now Heritage Grove is in play, and we're actually starting to see some dirt move over there and some development take place. And I'm very excited about the village, if you will, that's gonna be taking place across Willow from Clovis Community College. And that's gonna take some time to get there, but eventually, we will get there. So I like this idea of disciplined, organized, planned development. Now, we have created some exceptions. For example, what has been described and mentioned is kind of that northeast area, which we were very clear on, we wanted to be a job-generating area. It wasn't gonna be single-family residential. We understood that maybe there might be a little bit of a buffer of single-family residential there, but it's job-generating that's taking place there. And then we had an exception when it came to the pecan orchard, because we needed some assistance in making sure that as Shepherd Avenue, Shepherd Avenue at that particular area where the pecan orchards are is not a particularly safe traveling lane. And so we decided we'd make an exception there. And so now, though, we're kind of getting to a point where I'm concerned that the exceptions might be swallowing the rule. The rule being controlled and orderly development. And so I'm not, I'm not in favor of expanding our sphere, other than that pecan orchard, which, you know, I have been in favor of for the reasons that I've described, related to straightening out the curve there at Shepherd. So I'm not in favor of the expansion, but I understand that other council members are, and I get where they're coming from. I just want to make sure that we, you know, not... I just want to make sure that we, you know, not create so many exceptions that we never get to the point where we have concentrated development that is taking place, that is going to allow for retail and commercial development within that village concept. Otherwise, we just have single-family residential all over the place and no real village. So that's my concern. So those are my comments, take them for what they're worth, they're just one person's comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Bob.
Just may I ask one question of Councilmember Wayland? You've been through a couple of these, and you share more like there's a policy, but it seems like it's not clear in the staff report, and that council has taken exception to a certain way of doing this? So is there or is there not, is my question, so that way it's clear to someone like me who's newer on the council to go, you know, when we make sphere decisions, this is what we have relied on in the past, and these are the exceptions that I'm speaking of, and these are why there is an exception. So that, can you help me with that?
Yeah, sure. I think for me to say that that is city policy might be an overstatement based on some of the comments that I've heard today. I would say, though, that based on how it is we get to where we want to be, where we have these villages in certain spots, it implies to me that we have a policy that we're going to be targeted in our development so that we can get enough rooftops to the point where we have retail that's going to serve that village. So my understanding was that there was a policy, but I am of the, or I think I was calling it a rule, because I was talking about how the exception was swallowing the rule. I felt that there was a rule. I don't, maybe I've been wrong about that, but whenever I tell people not to worry about how the city of Clovis is getting so huge, I tell them, because we have these villages, you're going to feel like you're in a small town, even though you're living in a town of 120,000, someday 150,000 folks, because we have this village concept. But unless we get enough focused, single-family residential in one area, they're really not going to have a gathering place there, because it won't make sense. So that's, in my view, has been the implied rule. I hope that answers your question, Bob.
Just in disclosure, I had a conversation with Dirk Puschel yesterday on the phone, and I spoke to Wilson Development on the phone this afternoon. I guess I have a question of staff. We do the EIR, at what point do we talk about the impact on public safety and infrastructure? Where does that come in the process?
Part of that will be included in the EIR. There's actually sections in there that address specifically public safety and utilities and services.
Okay, because that's a big concern of mine. And I'm in agreement with other council members who think that we should probably take this to the prolongation of Beheimer. If we're going to do this, we should square it off. Whole area, because obviously if you look at Beheimer, or is that Beheimer all the way up on the north?
Yeah, the furthest north is Beheimer.
Because obviously, in the event that we do development, the utility corridors are going to need to be logical. So I think we should look at that, or at least consider it. You know, part of, one of Jose and my friends, we had a very good friend who passed here a few years back named Dave Huerta, and Dave was on the SWAT team. And one of the things that he pounded into my head as a young police officer is that when you don't have time to plan, you plan anyway. And we have time to plan, and it's important for us to plan anyway, because eventually this property is probably going to, one way, shape, or form, it's either going to be us, the city of Fresno, or if the county ever gets into building, there's going to be some type of development in that area sometime in the next lifetime, you know, I don't know if it's mine or my children's, but this way we would be in a position to have logical development on land that has, most of it is undeveloped, which is the preferred way for us to do this. I mean, we only have, like Jose said, we have one county island, and that is Tarpe, which is fully developed, and there's really no, there's no benefit to the city of Clovis, its voters, or its taxpayers, to take that in. We wouldn't make, it really wouldn't be logical. So, you know, in the process, I think it should be squared off, and then the impact on public safety services and infrastructure would be something that I'm very concerned about. Plus, I also want to know the feelings of the people that we're going to be welcoming as our future residents. And then we also need to, as part of whoever makes the motion, we're going to need to give direction as to what noticing we are planning on doing on this. And so that's all I have. Any further discussion from council?
A question on the noticing. So Joe, you're thinking of the neighborhood in the blue there on the map, or how far into that neighborhood is the blue?
Whatever the law requires. The law requires, typically what?
Excuse me, 600 or 800 feet.
800 feet.
So I think they, it wasn't mentioned, it wasn't mentioned in the report, so I think 800 feet.
Into that, into that southern neighborhood?
Yeah.
And are we talking mailing? Is that how we're doing this still? Is there any technological advantage we can figure out to notice someone by email or text?
Yeah, yeah, typically, in this case, it'd probably be mail, but then we also do noticing in the business journal too, so it'll be in there.
That doesn't count.
Yeah.
Nobody reads it back of the business journal, I'm sorry. That is like a low, that doesn't count.
Is there a logical street that we can bring this to so that?
I don't know. Yeah, I can't tell.
Yeah, I don't have any on here.
And the cost of that noticing is covered by the applicant in this case?
Well, typically, when we have projects that do noticing, the city does that, we have little, you know, the little postcard notices, and, you know, it's just part of the entitlement fees, it's part of the project, so it wouldn't be necessarily a separate noticing cost.
Ricky, could you unmask, please?
Yeah, so it wouldn't be like a typical, like a separate noticing cost, it's usually just part of the entitlement fees that they pay for whatever entitlement comes forward.
So the, everyone in the Dry Creek Preserve, 800 feet into that neighborhood to the blue, whatever that, however, wherever that logical cutoff would be, and then everybody in the proposed 825 acres, yeah?
That's correct, that would be us doing that.
And also, if part of the motion is all the way to Beheimer, we would need to bring in the people within 800 feet of that.
Exactly, correct.
Can I just ask a question about that? I think that Bong may be really, I don't really see Beheimer being the logical line there. Really, what I see is Copper being the logical line. I mean, you guys already know that I'm not in favor of this sphere, so I don't, I don't know that I should be making a comment on this, but if we're going to, if you want to do that, I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't just go to Copper. Then it would really square off nicely, because that's where Heritage Grove is, and I think that might have been something that Bong was alluding to earlier, but I don't know for sure.
No, I was talking about north of Copper, Heritage Grove, when Ericell kind of mentioned, but I'm all for that. But Bong is much younger than us, so he might see this in his lifetime.
Good call. Heck, we'll stick a stop at Beheimer then, no, I'm just kidding.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to authorize the staff to begin the process to amend the city of Clovis sphere influence with already, I think we didn't propose anything new with regards to noticing guidelines, so with the current noticing guidelines that are already in place, because those 800 already applied, it's not like we were adding something more, like we didn't change it to 900. So all that you were saying was, it was already by code that we were doing that anyway, correct?
Yeah, so we'll do the 800 feet south of Shepherd.
Yeah, and so, and we were already, currently, we were already notifying the DCP, so it wasn't something new that we were going to add, so. Prior, ask for a second, is there anybody, any other further discussion? Do you have your light on, Lynn?
No.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a second.
Are we talking, are we talking just to Beheimer, though, or what are we talking there?
No, that's a recommendation, but I think it's going to be something which Slavko's going to decide, correct? Because that's what I understood.
So we need to make the ask.
We need a, thanks.
Well, yeah, we can proceed with what you're asking. If the motion is to square it off to Beheimer, then that's the one we'll proceed with, and Slavko and the council.
Yeah, so I'll do that as well.
So square it off from Beheimer to Sunny Side, just to be clear, okay?
And I'll second that, to Beheimer.
Mr. Clerk, is the, is the motion clear enough?
When I replay it tomorrow, it will be.
What do you say?
When I replay it tomorrow, I will.
I heard blah, blah, blah tomorrow, but to Beheimer, it's close enough, you got it. Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to one. Okay. Item eight is receiving file update on the city of Clovis investment portfolio strategy. Jeffrey Blanks, Deputy Finance Director.
Button right there, turns on the, there you go.
That one, okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jeff Blanks, I am the Deputy Finance Director. The item before you is just a brief update on the city of Clovis investment portfolio strategy. It's particularly in regards to municipal securities. So I'm just going to walk through briefly here. So currently, the city is invested in a number of things. Agency securities, these are US-sponsored organizations, they're generally supported by the Treasury, pretty low risk. CDs, of course, up to the FDIC limit, so anything under 250,000, one per banking institution. We're also invested in the local agency investment fund, that's managed by the state, and we also have a sweep account that's through our bank, that's overnight investment of excess cash. So that's currently what we utilize. Just a little bit about our strategy, we use something called a three-year ladder. So excess funds are invested in three-year securities, those are our agency and CDs. As funds mature, they're reinvested in those, in new three-year securities, so we just keep casting that money out. The goal of that is really to minimize volatility. So when there's volatile times in the market, interest rates moving very quickly, this helps to kind of smooth that out. We're really in an extremely low-risk portfolio, and really our investment strategy is first and foremost, safety of the principal, so we're required, obviously, to protect the principal first. Next is liquidity, so obviously we need to have cash on hand when we need it to pay our bills, pay payroll and things like that. And then finally, yield. So in looking at that, of course, yield is important, but safety and liquidity are much more so. So really, COVID-19's had a pretty large effect on rates. So rates for three-month treasuries back in February before COVID hit were 1.27%. Those same rates were .11% by the end of March, and they continued to yield in the .1% to .15% range. Yields for agency securities and CDs, they dropped as well. They're currently ranging in the .2% to .3% range, so really a huge, huge hit to the rate environment that we're operating within. So municipal securities, these are bonds and other indebtedness issued by cities, counties, school districts, special districts, both within California as well as other states. These are allowable investments per the city's investment policy and California Government Code Section 53601. Of course, we'd only be investing in those that are rated A or better. The yields are ranging from .6% to .9%, so not huge yields, but quite a bit higher than the agencies and CDs. There is some risk involved, that's why you see slightly better yields, but minimal risk of default. When you're investing in As through Triple As, you're really looking at pretty minimal risk. Of course, anything that we invested here would probably be a pretty small percentage of the portfolio, we'd still be utilizing the agencies and CDs and other avenues as well, and we'd utilize the same ladder approach. So we would be investing in three-year municipal securities as well. And so ultimately, this is just an update per our investment policy. Even though these are allowable, we are required to bring it before council, before we make any sort of purchases regarding these, and so this is that notice. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I have a really, oh, sorry, they're calling me. You go, you have a real question, I have a pretend question.
Good job, Jeff.
Thank you.
You made this presentation a lot more clear than I think it otherwise could have been, so. The, I'm really dumbfounded, though, that municipal securities are yielding higher than the treasuries, because generally what I can recall from my finance classes was that municipal securities are going to be tax-free investments, so the investor has an incentive to purchase them. But we're not going to get any of those tax-free benefits by investing in these, but we still get a higher yield than we would if we were just in our straight treasuries or the other federally-backed types of investments, is that right?
Right, yeah, that is correct. So ultimately, and really the only reason that we're kind of looking at these is simply because of the, just incredibly low yields that are out there in the market right now. We probably wouldn't be looking at any sort of increased risks if we didn't think that there was a trade-off and a benefit here.
So do, does the law currently allow us to invest in AAA corporate bonds?
They do, yes. Bit more, again, in terms of risk portfolio, our investment policy also allows it. Bit riskier, obviously, higher risk of defaults, but again, allowable, should the city consider wanting to kind of get their toe in that market as well.
Can you give me an idea of what a AAA corporate bond is going to be paying, three years or less these days?
Three years, I want to say, most recent I saw, the spreads actually weren't much better than taxable municipals, so probably somewhere in the range of 1.1, maybe, 1.2, nothing, not, again, not probably enough of a spread at this point to kind of inherit that type of risk.
Okay, thank you.
Another really important question. Are you new?
Relatively so. So I was before your council back in January, probably seems like many, 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 many years ago.
There was no life before COVID-19, so I have no idea what you're talking about.
That is correct, so I have been, I've been with the city for a little over three years, and in this current role for a little over one.
Did you wear a suit and tie last night?
Exactly.
I did. That's how we could tell you were new.
That's exactly right. Exactly. Well, I'm sorry I don't remember you from January, that does seem like, I can't remember anything before COVID-19. Actually, there was no life before COVID-19. Anyway, so I just, I didn't, I didn't, not that we never met you officially, but we had, so nice to see you again. And next time, get the polo shirt emailed, and just come in a polo shirt.
There you go, I missed that memo, obviously, so it's polo shirts from here on in.
Thanks for the report, thank you.
It's kind of off-subject, but has the city of Clovis ever bonded, like other municipalities?
Yeah, so we've issued mainly sewer and water bonds are the ones that we have outstanding, we have debt on. We also have some tax allocation bonds related to the RDAs.
Great, thank you. Any other, Bob? You're dressed fine.
I figured I might get a little bit of love from Bong.
David agrees with you. Internally, do you oversee all this, or is it just done by a broker, because we just tell them our policy, or do we actually have someone on staff who looks at all the investments?
So we oversee it. We do use broker dealers for our CDs and our agencies, so they, not quite to the level of an advisor, where they're actually kind of managing for us, we do kind of the management, they provide us with what's kind of available in the market, they do give us some insight and things like that based on what our desires are, but ultimately, we internally manage it.
And then, it's sort of what Councilmember Wayland said, there's other areas. Who makes that decision? Is it just you and the CFO kind of decide, okay, maybe we should move some into a different?
It's kind of, it's kind of a joint decision. We kind of discuss it internally, we also bring in city manager when necessary to discuss, and actually, anything for our policy, if we're trying to go, say, beyond three years, then city manager has to approve it. So there are certain decisions that kind of can be made within the finance department, and then other ones that would require city manager approval, but really, in terms of the strategy, we try to kind of involve both our department as well as city manager to make sure that we're moving forward in a way that everybody's kind of comfortable with, and that follows, again, the policy and the government code.
And so is there ever that thought in which certain funds go to low? Or that's something we decide and give to you? Or is that something which you can see and go recommend to us? How does that process work?
It would probably be a situation somewhat similar to this, except we would probably have discussions internally and then most likely bring something forward. If we were thinking of making a particularly serious adjustment in terms of the percentages that we're kind of laying out in our portfolio, we'd probably want to bring that forward, if for nothing else, a notice-type of thing, a receiving-file-type of situation like tonight where we're bringing it forward. We probably want to, you know, if we were going to get into corporates or we're going to do anything like that, we would probably end up bringing that forward in some capacity.
And then who checks you to make sure you're abiding by our policy? Who's that second check? Because I'm not an expert. You bring me those reports every month, right?
Right.
And so I can't even tell... So who's checking you to make sure that, you know, we're all abiding by the...
So, one, all of our, all of this is required to be reported as part of our audit. And so part of the audit is they look at our portfolio and they look at what we're invested in. And there's some, there's some check on that side of things. Also, all of these, again, all of these purchases are multiple sign-offs. Again, we're required, we're not even allowed to go out and purchase things that aren't covered within our, within our policy. So we wouldn't even be able to get into a market and be able to purchase things that aren't covered within our policy.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jeff.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions for staff? We'll open this to the public. Any member of the public in chambers wish to address staff on this or council? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
There are none.
And we, did we receive any correspondence?
We did not.
Okay. This is a receiving-file report. Thank you. Very good presentation, Jeffrey.
Thank you very much.
Council, our council items, receiving file change to council conflict of interest disclosure requirements at council meetings. David Wolf.
Yes, Mayor, Members of the Council. There's been a few small changes to the conflict of interest disclosure rules at council meetings. So the same rule applies. If there's a conflict, you would disclose it, not participate. But the new rule is, just to add some clarity, is if you come to the meeting late after the item's been considered, you still have to immediately disclose that you had a conflict, even though you weren't here at that meeting. And if you leave before the item's considered, you have to disclose prior to leaving the meeting that you have that conflict. And so it's just to make sure someone doesn't, fails to disclose, leaves the meeting, isn't actually here during that item, and didn't disclose. That's all it is. Just want to bring it to your attention. So anytime there's a conflict of interest, if you're here at the meeting, you're going to have to disclose, even if you missed part of it, you have to disclose either immediately upon arriving, if it's already been considered, or if you leave before, you have to disclose before you leave the meeting. So a lot of times, it may be the first item on the meeting, maybe that you have a conflict, you may come late to the meeting because you know that there's a conflict. If you do that, you're going to have to disclose immediately upon arrival. Or a lot of times, it'll be the last item on the agenda and you'll leave the meeting. Usually then, we've always disclosed, but just in case, don't want to forget, you have to disclose before you leave the meeting. And that's the only change.
Is that because of what happened last week?
No, it's not. Actually, I already have planned to update this. And we're going to try to be a little more careful and make sure on closed-session items that we are reminding you of if there's a conflict.
Just I, since I brought it up, just for the record, there was an item on closed session that I didn't realize was an item that I had a conflict on. And as soon as I realized it, I shot a flare up into the air and got out of here as quickly as possible.
You started the fires.
Any questions for David on this item? Lynn?
Can you just say out loud again, when we disclose the conflict, we are required to say what?
You would identify what the conflict is. So you point to our own property within a thousand feet of the decision, therefore, I cannot participate.
Okay.
And I'm leaving the room.
Okay.
That's it. Very simple.
Or your employer affects your employment or something.
Yes, just really...
So you have to state the reason...
Yes.
Why you are, why you have a conflict, and then you have to go.
Yes, you have to state the reason, yes.
And there was a second part of that, wasn't there? If you walked into the room after it was on there, you have to state it anyway?
Yes. And that's what the change is. If you came late to the meeting, the item you had a conflict in on was considered, you have to disclose immediately upon coming to the meeting. You have to disclose that.
Very good.
David, overall, you are pretty aware, huh, of our conflicts? That's why many times we get a little, I guess, warning from you.
Well, the ones for sure, staff will, like the...
Staff will...
For property, ownership issues, yes, because we, staff does a circle around property. But if it's something else, if we don't know about it, you're going to have to let us know. So we don't necessarily know about your personal lives and things you're doing and your jobs as much, but we know for sure, property, we've got that down. We know some of your jobs and what you do, so we can usually get a guess. But if you think any inkling, you should let us know so we can look at that.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address council on this item? Any member of the public in chambers? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
No.
Mr. Clerk, did we get anything?
Would you not?
Okay. This is a receiving-file report. Item number, item 10. Consider approval of designation of voting delegate and alternative for the League of Cities Annual Conference and Business Meeting on October 7th through 9th, 2020. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. The, as council's well aware, annually, there's the League of Cities Annual Conference. And the final act of that conference is voting on league resolutions. And the city needs to identify who the voting delegate is because each city only gets one delegate that can vote, and we have to identify it ahead of time. But alternates, and then the league makes sure that only one person votes that's identified for each city. This year, the conference will be a virtual conference. Because of the pandemic, they will not be holding the conference, but they will still be having the vote on a resolution. We'll be talking about one of the resolutions that's up later. But council needs to identify who will be the voting delegate for this year and identify an alternate as you feel necessary. I guess the advantage is this year, being tagged as the voting delegate doesn't mean you have to stay till the end of the conference and get home and fight rush hour traffic out of LA. So this may catch on, but I'm asking council to identify who's going to be the voting delegate and an alternate as necessary, and then we'll send the paperwork down to the league.
What's been our history on this?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Lynn?
Well, are you, are you able to go? Are you able to call in?
Yeah.
Are you able to call in as a backup?
As far as my calendar says, I can.
All right. I'm prepared to make a motion when you're ready.
Any member of the public in council chambers wish to address council on this item? Seeing none, any, we have any running on the web?
None.
And Mr. Clerk?
No.
We'll bring this back to council for motion. Lynn?
I'll move that we designate the mayor as our voting delegate and the mayor pro tem as our alternate for the annual conference.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 11, consider the League of California Cities' annual resolutions set for approval at the annual conference on October 7th through 9th, 2020. Luke?
So the resolution that is on the ticket for this year's conference is, it was actually sponsored, I believe, by the City of Cerritos. There's a pretty lengthy item in the agenda with kind of a pretty good discussion of the matter. There is a proposed resolution stating that the league should urge Congress to amend Section 230 of the Federal Communications Decency Act of 1996 to, that provision basically gave very broad blanket immunity to social media, internet hosting, internet groups and companies, that they are not liable for all of the content that's posted on their site. There's a lengthy discussion as to why that was done. That was necessary at the time, basically, because the internet was something new and we wanted it to grow. And as we are all well aware, those platforms have grown immensely. And some feel that some of that blanket immunity needs to be taken away, and there needs to be some policing of the content that's posted. That is the resolution consideration that is being, that the league will be considering, and we wanted council to weigh in for whoever the voting delegate's going to be as to where Clovis stands on that. And it's a two-edged sword, and it's a slippery slope. And, you know, there's arguments for both pro and con. There's a pretty good discussion in the agenda item package. It doesn't, the resolution doesn't talk about specifically exactly what changes they want to be made. And I know there has been talk in Washington about maybe changing this section, but I don't know where it's going to go. And we're just offering it up for council for consideration, whether they recommend a vote in support of this resolution or no action.
Thank you, Luke. Any discussion?
Luke, then league is doing this, and just if we want to tag along.
So, no...
The league is in support.
That's what will be determined, is whether the league is in support of this. The City of Cerritos sponsored this resolution. So now, for the league to support it, it needs to be considered by all of the voting members of the league and to determine whether they are in support of this or not. The item we are offering to council is where does Clovis stand on this? For, you know, of the 451 cities or whatever, are we a yes, this needs to be done? Or are we a nah, it's not our fight, we're staying out of it? That's what council needs to decide.
And does this happen often, where cities are using the league to affect federal legislation or federal stuff? Because all the time that I've been here, it's been all-state stuff, and so...
Yeah, I can't, I can't necessarily recall off the top of my head a similar case to this. Usually, usually, the resolutions seem, at least in my memory, are more specific and more directly impacting cities than this resolution. But this is the resolution that has made it through the processes and will be considered
So how would this, how would this affect the Devin Nunes Cal thing? There's all this stuff that we see where you have judges back east will throw things out. Does, is this, we're just recommending things to Congress and they can just do what they want? We're just taking a position or not taking a position?
Correct. And how it would specifically address that case, I don't know. I haven't paid that much attention to that case.
I just, I haven't either. I just brought it up as an example.
I will tell you that the origin of this resolution was from the City of Cerritos. And after, shortly after, basically, a melee and looting of a nearby mall, there was some social media posting on, "Tonight, we loot the Cerritos Mall." And the City of Cerritos, they were burdened with the extra cost of security with going out and providing extra police work to protect what they thought was a credible threat. So that led them saying, hey, there needs to be some limit on this. You can't be asking for criminal activity over, over social media. If you do, you need to be partly liable. That's what led to this. Now, again, we're not, council doesn't have the authority to change the law. The league, all council is deciding is, are we voting to ask the league to send something to Washington saying, hey, you need to amend this? It's, even if that happened, there's no guarantee that anything's going to get changed. But it's a, it's a pretty, it's something that's being looked at up and down and throughout the United States at different levels of government. But how much it plays in and how it actually comes to be, we don't know.
You know, I, maybe I just better reserve until you've closed the public comment. I've just got some comments to share on it, but I'll wait. Sorry, I shouldn't have turned on my light.
I guess my only comment, I don't, I feel like, I guess I'm throwing this long up. Of all the things that the league could be endorsing or sponsoring this year in terms of legislation, this is what they pick? So I guess I worry that, and I don't know where the league, I don't pay as much attention to it as I used to, but in my mind, I guess I would have thought there might have been more resolutions around state control issues or local control issues or things that had a more direct impact on cities. Not that this doesn't, but I guess I'm just a little surprised that there's only one in here, and that's what it is. I don't know what's happening in the committees. These guys are better engaged than I am, but...
I agree. I think...
That's what lost their way.
It could be due to the fact that, to be honest, everybody, every city out there is so busy dealing with COVID and/or fire issues that coming up with a draft resolution, sponsoring a resolution for the league may have been at the tail end of their priority list, and this may have been the only one that came forward, so...
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Jose?
No, I think this is a very complex issue that it's, it's all about whether it's about publishing, what they publish and what they don't publish. And I don't think I'm competent enough to know what's up, you know, what awaits us. So I don't know. And I'm usually up on this tech stuff and, because I know it's what helps, allegedly helps these big tech giants, you know, censor some, some stuff and not censor others. So I don't know. I don't have enough information on this subject to, it'd take forever to learn enough about this whole, the guarantees that were given to, to, to the internet people to get launched. I think at one time, we're going to have to revisit it. We, the country, not we, city council. So that's, that's something for Congress, not us.
Any other questions for staff? We'll open this up to public comment. Any member of the public in chambers wish to address council on this item? Seeing none, anyone on the web?
There are none.
Devin Nunes is Cal.
Any emails or anything, Mr. Clerk?
No.
Okay, we'll close public comment. I got to agree with Jose. This, I think this is going the wrong way. This needs to come from Washington. We're going to, there are First Amendment issues here that, there's so many landmines here, I just don't, I don't see it. But it's just my, my two cents. Anybody else? Bob?
Yeah, so there are three resolves associated with this resolution, and I just kind of want to take them in reverse order just to maybe address some of the comments that have been made and questions that have been asked by council. This is something that's going to go to the Public Safety Committee, so I'll have an opportunity to review and then vote on it. Any direction that this council gives would be helpful to me, and then I know it'll be helpful to the mayor as well. The last resolve says, "An online platform that will, willfully or negligently fails in either of these duties is not immune from enforcement of state and local laws which impose criminal or civil liability for such failure." It is true that Section 230 is a federal law, but it sounds to me as though there may be a movement either at the local level or the state level to impose some type of criminal or civil liability for any failure of the two resolves that are up there. But right now, I don't know of any, and frankly, I think that it's going to be difficult to pass any law at the state or local level because I'm of the opinion that the federal law probably encompasses this area, and therefore, we probably ought not be allowed, or the law will not, the courts will not allow us to come in with our own civil or criminal liability at the local level. Number two, resolve is, "Online platforms must provide to law enforcement information which will assist in the identification and apprehension of persons who use the services of the platform to solicit and to engage in criminal activity." I can tell you that that's a real issue for us. At the District Attorney's Office, and I know it's a real issue for law enforcement. We do need social media or online platforms to be very responsive to our requests, sometimes in a very short period of time, in order to find out who is engaging in criminal activity. So for me, I'm, any incentive we can provide to online platforms to be very, almost hyper-responsive to the requests from law enforcement agencies or to the District Attorney's Office... So for me, I'm, any incentive we can provide to online platforms to be very, almost hyper responsive to the requests from law enforcement agencies or to the District Attorney's Office for whether it's a subpoena, deus estem, or some other type of identifier which will help us to know who it is that's engaging in this criminal activity would be helpful. The number one resolve is online platforms must establish and implement a reasonable program to identify and take down content which solicits criminal activity. I think that's where most of us are having trouble with, at least that's where I'm having the most trouble. How are we defining criminal activity? Which criminal activity or, you know, which law is going to be considered when making the determination as to whether it's criminal activity? You know, is it going to be California, Nevada, just federal law? Is it going to be international law? So, the, in my view, I think that's where we kind of run into some challenges, but if we just focus on the second resolve, which is, hey, just be responsive. If there's going to be a law violation in the state of California, you know, obviously the one that we think of, at least we, I think we all think of most, is going to be child pornography. We want online platforms to be very responsive, yeah, or any kind of kidnapping that's taking place or associated with it. Yeah, yeah. So, so I think that from, from my perspective, I would just recommend to the counsel that, you know, we give discretion to the voting delegate, you know, to the mayor. I'll try to pass on as much information as I can when we hear about it in the Public Safety Committee, and that, you know, we would be in favor of some of those parameters of, you know, making sure that law enforcement is responsive to, or excuse me, online platforms are very responsive to law enforcement requests.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody else? Okay.
I'll make the motion then?
Yes, absolutely.
I move that we direct our voting delegates to have discretion based on what takes place at the League of California Cities Annual Conference on how they should vote on this item, that as a city, we are expressing our support with the idea that we do our best to make online platforms hypersensitive to responses from law enforcement for assistance in identification and apprehension of persons that are using the services of the platform to solicit and to engage in criminal activity. Sorry, John, did you get all that? Will you get it tomorrow? Okay, good.
Do we have second? All second. Any further discussion?
Well, only with, with constitutionally appropriate documents, subpoena, a warrant.
So, I just want to understand, the direction is that our delegate can say no, no action or yes?
That's correct. The discretion is there, and we've got the parameters. Hopefully, they're going to provide guidance to them.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is workshop for the City of Clovis Council to conduct a workshop to discuss the impact on ongoing operations during the COVID-19 state of emergency as declared by the federal, state, county of Fresno, City of Clovis, and to explore actions that we may take in response to the crisis. Luke?
Thank you. So generally during this workshop, I show you the graphs that the county sends us every Tuesday, but since our meeting last week was on Tuesday, I don't have new slides from the county to show you as far as case rates in Clovis, but I do have some other graphs and charts to show you. We were discussing the tier process, that each county is in a different tier. Fresno County is currently in the purple tier, purple air day, purple tier, it's all the same right now, but air day, you know, the purple, the airborne purple. So, purple is the worst, it's widespread. The criteria is, and for the last week, the average daily new cases is more than seven per hundred thousand population, and that the positive test rate, the positivity, is more than eight percent. Now, Fresno County has a population of 1.033 million, so about 70 cases per week, new cases per week puts us into this widespread category. But the thing to keep in mind is, okay, so the data is, it takes a while to compile this data, so tomorrow, and every Tuesday, the state kind of releases the, the new ranking. Tomorrow will be based on the week that ended 10 days ago. So, right now Fresno has, Fresno County has a, is, the state has us down at 12.6 cases, 12.6 cases per hundred thousand, and a positivity rate of 9.8%. Now, that is based on data from the week ending August 29th, so there's, there's a lag. And then, once you're in a tier, you have to stay in that tier a minimum of three weeks. Well, this is not, this is not, this is, there is actually some not bad news, I'm not going to call it good news, but there's some not bad news coming up in some slides. But, so you have to stay in it for three weeks, but if you're going to go to the next tier, you have to meet that criteria for two weeks. So let's, I don't think we're going to do that, but let's say tomorrow they come out with the data and they say Fresno County, you're in the substantial category. If we stayed there for two weeks, we would have finished our three weeks in the widespread category. We would have been two weeks in the substantial category, so we could move to that the following week. So it's a, it's a slow process, you can't jump more than one tier at a time, and then once we moved to the substantial, we'd have to stay there for three weeks. So it's not a rapid, a rapid change, but this is, this is how it works. Now, the one thing to keep in mind, because I'm going to show you, the next slide is going to show you the case count in Fresno County. When they talk about new cases, there's two different kinds of tests to determine if you have an active COVID infection. There's a third that tells you if you've ever had it. The antibody test tells you if you've had it. We're not going to talk about that, but there's two kinds that tell you if you're active. One is the polymerase chain reaction test, and the other one is an antigen test. The PCR polymerase chain reaction test is the one the state uses. So we could have 100 positive tests, but if 20 of those were antigen tests, they don't count those. We only have 80 PCR tests, so they just count the PCR test. It is not as fast as the antigen test, it's more expensive, but apparently the state has, just for consistently, consistency, determined it to be more reliable, or it might just be because different areas of the state are using different testing rates, but, so that's where we need to be. This is off of their website today, showing our day-over-day new, new cases. So, the chart, the, the testing period that put us into the widespread category, let's see, it covered right in here. That was the, you know, the period ending August 29th. You can see that it's dropped significantly. Now, we're down to 120 total tests, but I don't know how many of those are antigen tests, they don't report that. So it's conceivable that we might be getting down close to less than seven tests per hundred thousand population, but we won't know that. But, but keep in mind that, okay, so, let me get back to my pointer here. So this was the week that put us in the purple. This area is going to be the number that they report tomorrow, because it's 10 days old. This really won't be reported until a week from tomorrow, so it's going to be a while, but at least the new case rate is dropping very significantly, which is, which is good news. There's, I, I could probably go in and glean from different websites what the positivity rate is, but they don't actually report that very readily, and again, they don't tell me which ones are the antigen tests and which ones are the PCR tests, so we just kind of have to wait for them to come out with the data. This is a, a chart taken from the, the state's website as well, showing the, the day-over-day new deaths of, it's still spiking up and down. It would, you know, going back to, you know, so far, we seem to have peaked on our new cases. Deaths tend to follow two to three weeks afterward, so you can see we, you know, we may be, we may have peaked, but it's, we're still closer to the peak on the deaths than we are to the new cases, but it is, it is notable to see the weekly changes over here that, you know, it is going down significantly. So that, that's, that's good news, let's hope it continues. And then, this is the chart, I, I show you each week, showing the hospitalizations. Again, the solid blue line is the confirmed COVID-related hospitalizations, the dotted blue line is the confirmed plus the suspected COVID hospitalizations, and then the solid red line is the confirmed ICU COVID cases in Fresno County, and the dotted red line is the, is the confirmed plus the suspected ICU cases. So, those are, those are definitely trending in the right direction as well. And that's it for the slides and the data. I will be reporting every week from now on what tier we're in, because that is very critical for our business community and for reopening. Should we drop into the next tier, at that point, you know, probably the most visible changes will be restaurants can have indoor dining at 25% capacity, and nail salons can open up and have indoor work. So, you know, it's, it's not a lot, I mean, we're not back to full opening by any stage, you know, stage, but it's, it's something, so I'll be reporting on that each week.
Thank you. Any questions for Luke? Seeing none, I'll open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address counsel on this item? Seeing none in chambers, do we have anybody on the web?
None.
Mr. Clerk, did we get any letters?
No.
Okay, I will close comments on that. Now we go to city manager comments.
I don't have really anything, but I did ask Chief Banaski to stay till this point in case anybody has any questions about what's going on. The fires are everywhere, and we are daily seeing and breathing the, the effects of it, and I know Clovis Fire has resources out on numerous fires, so I just opened it up. If you have any questions, I can ask the chief to come up here, and he can probably answer any you've got.
Any questions for Luke or the chief? Lynn?
May I just be curious if you had any just general comments, chief, about what's happening? Fires are everywhere, could sum it up, but there might be more than fires are everywhere, but just your perspective, what's happening to our Clovis firefighters, et cetera?
Our firefighters are doing good, as always. The fires are progressing. I mean, right now, Cal Fire for the South Zone, or what I'd call the East Zone, East Side, is main goal is try to put in as much dozer line and protect, and try to get as much of the lower section below Albury back into their homes, try to take the relief off of the large animal places, and try to get them back reestablished in their proper homes. It'll probably still be a couple weeks before citizens get in, back into Shaver Lake, so that's still there. You can see that it's, if you look at the air quality, and now we're looking at it why the previous items were going, is, is that if you can go into Mammoth, June Lake, the air quality there, if you just follow like the chimney of the San Joaquin, is 717, so that's how bad the air is there. So it is definitely actively burning, it's going straight up over the Sierras, and that's where it is. The Sequoia Fire merged into a couple fires, now it's all one, so it's 90,000 acres, we do have resources down there. They are starting some evacuation in Three Rivers, and looking at doing part of Spring Bill. So it is still very dynamic, we'll see what the wind has to offer as it pushes through into Wednesday and the Thursday, and I have been noticed by plenty of the OES representatives that they are asking for crew swaps or people to stay beyond the 14 days. So we'll be out there for definitely, my guess, end October, so that's where we stand here locally. I do have people all the way up at the Oregon border that are on incident management teams, and the ones that are at the Mendocino Fire, we are coming, I don't even know how much that forest could be left over the last three or four years it burned, it's now turned into one big fire at 700,000 acres. The one today is that it grew, so it's 212,000 acres at the Creek Incident, so we went from about 16% contained. If the fire grows, we don't keep up with putting in line, the percentage of containment drops, so we're down, back down to about 10%. So, it's waiting to see, the weather's getting more favorable, except for the wind, so that's really the update, but law enforcement's still up there. Clovis PD's sending five, eight officers up there, day to continue with the security and the protection of people's homes that were evacuated, so that's the other reason, is try to shrink that down. The Madera side, they've shrunk down a lot of that, or some of it out of Norfolk and in there, so those people are able to get back in, and that's really the goal, is try to get people's homes, people back in their homes as quick as possible is where the goal is. And another one, just to put the rumor out again, there's no evacuation. The fire is miles from Harlan Ranch, because I've read it on Nextdoor. It's not even in what we call state-regulated land, which is on the other side of Frye and Kern Canal, and there is plenty of open space for us to be able to use aircraft or any type of dozer we possibly need, but I have read, read it, seen it, that people are evacuated, and I just want to reassure the community of Clovis, we do not have any wildland urban interface in the city of Clovis. We might have some big lots, Dry Creek or some other areas, some of them might not be well-maintained, like we saw maybe a month ago, if you saw that on Fowler Avenue where we had, you know, 30, 40 acres go up, but it will come to a street and we'll be able to put it out no matter where it goes. So believe me, in the Harlan Ranch where there are size lots, fire hydrants, there is no risk to the community in any way, shape, or form from a wildland fire in the city of Clovis.
Bob?
Thanks, Mayor. So, chief, have you experienced yet an increase in the amount of medical calls just associated with the air that we have in the valley? Or noticed that at all?
I really, simply today, no, over the weekend, I mean, I took city coverage for part of the time, and no more than normal. I mean, the summertime is always kind of bad for asthma calls and things along those lines. We also kind of had, I mean, if you look back at our numbers, we had a fall off from nobody really wanting to call 911 even with chest pain, strokes. I'm still to this day trying to figure out what happened to those people during the beginning of COVID, where they went, and how that didn't really, I gotta assume the same percentage of the population is having heart attacks and things like that, but that still is down if you look at the overall numbers for where we are. But our medical aides picked back up again, people started to call again, I would say July, like right after July 4th, and it's been pretty consistent of what it normally is. I think a lot of people are just inside, not going outside, at least I thought that till this weekend, till my lovely wife took me to Costco, and there was jam-packed with people, so, which is good for the city, but people definitely are out, but it doesn't appear that it's really affecting them on call volume more than normal for us. We're staffed just as normal, the ambulance company is, and the early morning calls have been really busy, actually, between like 5:00 and 8:00 AM.
The, and then I, I don't know to what degree you can speak on behalf of Chief Fleming, but I know that you'd mentioned how Clovis PD was up in the hills a little bit. You know, I'm a little bit concerned about what maybe some of the secondary effects are going to be from the Creek Fire in the city of Clovis, beyond just the, the smoke that we're experiencing, but, and I know that this fire was not like the Paradise Fire in the sense that a whole town was decimated, and there were a lot of primary residences that were destroyed in the Paradise Fire, but what ended up happening in Chico was, you know, a couple of months or a month later, was some, kind of difficult for Chico to absorb, and so I don't know if you've had some communication as to maybe how it is that we can head off some of those issues before they become big issues in Clovis like they became in Chico.
I think in some aspect of it is, is right now the estimate's about 370 homes have been lost. So of those, how many were full-time occupancies? The number they believe is somewhere around 120, and that's really on Albury Road where it comes around there is where the primary residents were of structures that were lost. So I think that's why Cal Fire really has the goal, is let's see how many people we can put back into their homes, and let's just see what that actually looks like for the local communities of what's the end result. I'm hopeful that that number is still pretty low. I don't think, I mean, the current rate we're going, hopefully, conditions continue the way they are. the way they are, progress is being made with contingency dozer line, that we don't lose any more homes, and in turn, it becomes a smaller population of people that are displaced. I'd be more worried of first of the year as the landlords or the ability for evictions and, you know, the economy of those people, that's kind of changed some of our dynamics if I was to look at it, that might have a bigger effect on our community than possibly the displaced residents. What you're just seeing now is a lot of them that are at Clovis Hills, Clovis North School, there's people out there with their travel trailers and things along those lines, but we've gone and talked to most of them. Most of the people at this point, my staff alone, other city people throughout the city kind of know that their house has been lost already, that they did a nice job in a lot of areas, it hasn't been on Cressman or Dogwood or a few other places, but they did do Allberry Road of a very good damage assessment. So, most people that have lost their homes have a pretty good idea that, that their home has been damaged at this point, based on the mapping that's been put out from the county sheriff. So, I think that's also where we're putting the right people, we're hearing about people who, a lot of people have insurance, it's just going to take time to rebuild or redo those things. So, see where they go and how that works out.
Did you want to add to that, Luke?
Yeah, if I can add a little bit to that, I have talked to Chief Fleming about this very subject. And a couple things, you know, I want to assure council that even though we do have resources up the hill helping out with this emergency, that we are maintaining our staffing on patrol. So, we are not, we, we are not sacrificing patrol coverage in Clovis to provide coverage up there. And then also, he is aware of some of the temporary locations, and just kind of adding a little, you know, putting eyeballs on them a little more often, just to, to watch for problems. So far, you know, like Chief Banaski said, this is, while this is a very significant emergency, the, the number of homes lost, the number of people permanently displaced is going to be nowhere near the campfire from a couple of years ago. But there will be impacts of, you know, even if it's 120, 130, I, I think what you're going to see is it's going to impact the, the housing market around here, which is already extremely tight, and that, you know, there probably will be, you know, even fewer vacancies. But the chief, Chief Fleming is aware of all this and is, is adjusting for it.
Chief, I have a question. The citizens of Clovis are generous folks. Is there something that individually people, I mean, obviously, making contributions to the Central California Red Cross would be helpful, but are there things that we can do individually to help our firefighters and our police officers that are up there? I, I, you know, I think we all want to feel like we can do something, is there something we can do?
I can tell you right now that our firefighters, no matter where they come from, there's, that today there was a group of firefighters that arrived from 1,300 mile drive from Texas that arrived at that fire. We run shifts well, we do this, this isn't the California First Rodeo doing these, we've been doing it for 30-plus years. Maybe not to the grandeur size that we've been doing in the last 10 years, but we've been doing this for a long time, we've got it well versed, and it's actually really evolved even from when I first started, is, is it's interesting, some of the businesses that have transitioned into helping out firefighters and stuff, is, is like a lot of our food preparation now actually comes, at least right now, it is in a bigger quantity, is, is from actual food vendors and stuff that the state contracts for movies. But movies and television aren't being done, those people have a business, so they have now entered into it, and I can honestly say, in some aspects, from what I've heard, the food level has increased to better quality, and coming from a little bit different vendor than the crews that used to make our meals, so it's a little bit better of the fact that it's a private vendor. But it goes to the same thing with sleep trailers to showers. Our staff is well taken care of, well compensated, there really isn't, their gear is cutting-edge the best that's out there. I mean, this is what they want to do, is be able to help and put fire out, and this is what the calling is for a majority of them who enter the fire service, this is what we want to do. Again, they're given all the proper supplies, proper food, I think they're just fine doing what they need to do, and this is what the expectation is. Now, you can go back to the poor Shaver Lake or Huntington Lake Fire Department volunteer personnel, some of them have lost their homes, that's a little bit different scenario than paid professional firefighters who are going out to these fires. They're on a different level of how they're treated, how they're done, it's not their own house or their own neighborhood that they're having to go out and put out. And for that being said, is, is all the cost that we basically front as the city of Clovis, we'd get all those back from reimbursement from either the federal or the state reimbursement. So, it doesn't cost any funds to the local taxpayer to, for our personnel to be up at these fires, helping out, all of that is reimbursed back to the city. So, there is no local cost to our general fund or anything for these assistance.
If it, and kind of where I was going with that was, I had a friend, name was Rand Padgett, worked for the city for almost 30 years, he was in Afghanistan, and he would write me a letter, and he, or an email, and he would say, send me some red-hot, I guess those little, little jaw breakers, and gum and things, and I would, I would send him things, and then I would just, inside a box, and I would just buy as many of those as I could, and I would just fill it, almost like they were, you know, the peanuts that you would put in there normally to keep stuff from moving around. And so, I mean, if, if there are little things that we can do as citizens, if you would just put it on social media, there, I think people want to feel like they're doing something, and...
20 years ago, I would have told you it was chewless tobacco, or smokeless tobacco was the thing back in the day, 20 years ago, that everybody would beg for or try to find, even that, through a healthier society and where we are, has diminished, is, is, and the way we rotate crews, we know their mental health is important to us and things like that. So, I don't mean, I saw the other day a Piedmont fire engine from the Bay Area at the Shaw Walmart picking up supplies. So, we do rotate them in and out, so they have the ability compared to Afghanistan or places like that where there isn't the ability to shop. We do do that for, we, we call it 24 hours off time, but they're still able to call up, so some of them, they've had to been called at 3 o'clock in the afternoon to come back, because the fire did blow up, but things along those lines. We try to make sure that they have the resources, the ability to go out for an off day to, even when they're out there for 14 or 21 days, because it is a long haul. And that's a little bit different than a fire that's managed by CAL FIRE to the federal resources. Federal resources are a little bit different to, when we're on federal fires of that campaign, and how we're, we work 12, by the time you get back, it's 16, you shower and sleep, and then you go back the next day. So, it's just a little bit different of the workrest ratio.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions for the chief or for Luke? Seeing none? Thank you. Now, we come to council comments. Bob? No pictures? Oh, they wouldn't be able to see anything anyway, with the smoke. Lynn? Mom? Jose? I, I don't know if you saw Sheriff Memm's press conference today. She was in Sacramento with, sitting at the table with the governor and across from the president, and it, it was kind of funny, because the governor introduced her as the mayor of Fresno. And, and during her news conference, someone pointed that out to her, and she, and she laughed, and she says, well, I'm glad you pointed that out, because I didn't want to point that out to the governor and the president. But where I'm going with this is, the president gave medals to some of the National Guard helicopter pilots at the guard base, which is right across the street from the city of Clovis, and I'm not sure who got them, but the, the commander of that unit is a Fullburg Colonel who lives here in Clovis. So, I'm real proud of what they've done, and I, I had the pleasure and privilege of being there, right, right there, watching them do their work, so that was something. And that's all I have, we will be adjourned. Thank you, folks. I think that's a great idea.